Turn on the speaker here. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to today's meeting. I'll ask everybody if they would, please, turn off their communication devices. And that's a reminder for all of us to do so, too. Today's Thursday, March 28, 2013. It's 9:02. And we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Start our meeting today, as we always do. We've got Murray Hamilton from the Heart of God Church Ministries here this morning to lead us in prayer, and then followed up by that with a pledge of allegiance. And I'll ask Commissioner Lynch to field lead us in today's pledge. If you all please rise. Murray?
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Once again, thank you for inviting me here. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come today requesting your presence here in this commission meeting, Lord God, that you would give your divine wisdom and guidance to this commissioner board. And we ask that you bless all present today, all the respected agencies, as well as individuals that are here, that we come together on one mind, on a court, that we agree to disagree, and at the end of the day, that we have did the calling of your will to serve your people here in Santa Rosa County. We ask that you continue to bless this great nation, these United States of America. And as we go through international, national, as well as local challenges, Lord, we look to you, to the hills which cometh our help, knowing that it only comes from you, and thanking that you are in full control. We ask these blessings in your holy and precious name. Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Murray, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out this morning. Commissioner Lynch, thank you. At this time, I'll move approval of minutes for the February 28, 2013, regular and special meetings. I do so without objection. Hearing none passes. And I'll start now to my right. Commissioner Williamson, any additions to today's agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Salter?
No, no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Melvin?
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything from staff? Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just note that item number five on the Administrative Committee is an add-on since Monday. It's an amendment to the Gulf Reef Permit for the Marine Sanctuary. I forwarded you an email that we had received from that committee, and it seems pretty straightforward that it's something that we could do. Also, number nine on the Budget and Financial Management is a $10,000 allocation from the District Four Recreation Funds for the Marine Science Center. I believe Commissioner Lynch had mentioned that last meeting when they're doing their proposal. I mean, Commissioner Melvin had mentioned that at the last meeting when we approved that additional property for the expansion of that facility. And those are the two add-ons.
All right, great. Anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and get started. This morning's agenda starts out with some proclamations. We have two this morning, one for Safe Communities America and one for Flood Safety Awareness Week. I'll start out with Safe Communities. Okay. And this, representing Safe Communities today is Sandy Park O'Hara, Administrator for Santa Rosa County Health Department, Jimmy Melvin, Sandy Ridge Marketing Director, and Cindy Sarver, I'm sorry, Cindy. Sarver, Crime Prevention Specialist for the Sheriff's Department. And this morning's proclamation reads, "Whereas the Safe Communities America Program is a designation of the National Safety Council, and whereas communities partners are pursuing the Safe Communities America designation with the intent of making all of Santa Rosa County a safer place to live, work, recreate, worship, and be educated through collaborative activities, networking, and sharing of resources. Whereas the Safe Community America Program designation would be beneficial to all military organizations interested in economic development, schools, law enforcement, health agencies, all facets of tourism and municipalities, whereas there are only three counties in the United States of America with Safe Community America Program designations, Santa Rosa can be the first Gulf Coast community to earn a Safe Community designation for the benefit of our residents and visitors to our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Santa Rosa County, Florida, fully supports the concept, function, and pursuit of Safe Communities America designation for Santa Rosa County and all its municipalities. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners encourages its employees and associates to give their time and expertise to support the development of safe communities in the service of Santa Rosa County. Passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Santa Rosa County this 28th day of March 2013 unanimously, and I'll sign it as chairman." Girls, you got anything to say?
Just thank you for the proclamation and the support in our endeavor to apply for the grant. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, we thank you for your efforts in getting this. It's pretty neat to be first one in Florida and only three in the United States. So that's Santa Rosa County out front again. So if you would, come on up and we'll get a picture. Yeah, we don't want to take this proclamation. Thank you. And our next one is, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, while Sandy's here, I just read, I think it was last week, where Santa Rosa County is ranked in the top 10 healthiest counties in the state of Florida?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Congratulations.
That was with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation out of Wisconsin. They rank all the counties nationwide, and for the state of Florida, we came in 10th.
Congratulations, gentlemen. You'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next proclamation this morning is Flood Safety Awareness Week. And we have Karen Thornhill and Sheila Harris. All right. "Whereas floods can happen anytime, anywhere, without warning, whereas floods create emergencies of great concern to Santa Rosa County with imminent threat of life and property, and cause hundreds of millions of dollars in damage to homes, businesses, and local government infrastructure. And whereas the state of Florida has received 19 presidential disaster declarations for flooding since the year 2000, and whereas Santa Rosa County has suffered major flood events in 1998, 2004, 2005, 2009, and 2011, causing millions of dollars in damage and destroying or endangering thousands of homes and businesses. Whereas damage from floods is not normally covered under standard homeowner policy, and residents need to review their homeowner policy and consider the risk of flooding and the need for flood insurance. And whereas the National Ocean and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, has named March 18 through March 23 as National Flood Safety Awareness Week, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County concur that the public that is well informed of dangers associated with flooding can improve its preparedness and reduce the occurrence of death and injury as a result of severe flooding. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Santa Rosa County that the week of March 25 through 29, 2013 be proclaimed Flood Safety Awareness Week, passed and adopted with a unanimous vote and signed by myself as chairman." Sheila, anything to say? If the water gets deep, hold your arms up, save your watch. Okay. I think, and you know, there's just a couple of names, Karen Thornhill and Sheila Harris on this, but I think we really, in all truthfulness, probably need to add everybody's name that's an employee of Santa Rosa County because, well, as the citizens are trying to stay home and safe and becoming aware of not driving in deep water or not crossing a bridge as flooded, especially so our Public Works Department. You know, they're the guys and girls that get out in that stuff and repair these roads or mark them that they're unsafe or repair the bridges after the flooding. So I think this goes out to everybody that's a county employee as far as proclamation and a thanks for a job well done. Thank you very much. So, we gonna do a picture? Nope. No, she's not photogenic today. Okay. Well, we'll just make a note of that and thank everybody for all their hard work on that one. So, all right, 9:30, we do have a public hearing, so we'll come back to that at 9:30. We'll start now with Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three items this morning. First, recommend soliciting proposals for sale of 10-acre partial in Santa Rosa Industrial Park for manufacturing facility with 50 employees. We talked about this on Monday. At this time, I would move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Second item, recommend appointment of Valera Young of NAS Pensacola as Veterans Representative on Workforce Escarosa Incorporated Board of Directors, and I would move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a Military Activities Update by Pete Gandy. About once a quarter, we're going to ask Pete to come in and just kind of give us a brief update of what's going on in the military community, especially everything going on in Washington, D.C., sequestration, all those things. It's an important time for all of us to keep our eye on the military ball. So, Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I placed in front of your desk this morning copies of the trip report and the agenda for the Northwest Florida Defense Coalition visit to Washington, D.C. back on March 11 through 13. And I want to give you a brief overview of what's in that report and then answer any questions you may have. As you may know, this is an annual trip by the five Northwest Florida counties from Escambia all the way to Bay County. They go to Washington every year about this time. The purpose is to meet with Pentagon and congressional leaders on military issues of importance to the Panhandle. This year, approximately 50 members attended from the five counties, including Commissioner Don Salter, Dave Hoxing, and myself from Santa Rosa County. Day one was a very busy day. Started off about 8:30 with briefings from about 10 briefer's on military issues of importance to the area. The topics included, and you'll see that in the trip report, a update on BRAC, a presentation on readiness and environmental protection initiative, REPI overview. You're familiar with that program. That helps support buffering efforts around Whiting Field. There was a presentation on the Gulf Military Tests and Training Range. And just to let you know, with sequestration going into effect, the range has been shut down or will be shut down every Friday from now on until the end of the fiscal year in September. We also got a presentation on GRASSI, that's the Gulf Range Aerospace Strategic Initiative. That was completed about two years ago. Of course, there was a lot of presentations and discussions on sequestration impacts to the military. Very good briefing on cyber warfare threat, which is growing. You see it in the papers every day, on the news. And then the impact of the Afghanistan war wind down and the emphasis that would be placed on naval sea power and Marine Corps presence to project global presence for the United States. There was a talk on budget reductions for the Air Force in particular and their need for a BRAC. And then there was a briefing from the Florida Defense Support Task Force on their activities here in the state. That evening, on the first day, Representative Jeff Miller hosted a reception for all attendees at the United States Botanical Garden. And then day two, which was planned to be meetings with our congressional leaders from the House and Senate, that got delayed, pushed back, and greatly abbreviated due to the fact that the President made an unannounced trip to Capitol Hill that morning to meet with Republicans. And so a lot of those meetings that were scheduled, although they did take place, they were very brief, very short. I thought the trip proved to be very productive and worthwhile, and I want to share some of the takeaways from that two days up there. Our first speaker on the first day was Anthony Principi. You may be familiar with that name. He is a former Secretary of Veterans Affairs, and he served as the chairman for BRAC 2005. Currently, he serves as Florida's Consultant on BRAC readiness and military matters in D.C. And I don't think that we could have, the state of Florida could have picked a more qualified person to be our representative up there. Mr. Principi foresees a BRAC coming in 2015 and perhaps another round in 2017, while Congress is not yet on board with supporting the need for a BRAC. The Department of Defense, and specifically the Air Force, is pushing for BRAC in response to sequestration and some $1 trillion in budget cuts over the next 10 years. While BRAC 2005 focused on developing jointness among the various services, this next BRAC is going to be focusing on achieving cost savings to meet budget constraints. His parting advice to all of us who attended that meeting was, "Take action now to enhance the military value of your local bases." And he specifically stressed encroachment, prevention, and buffering of those bases. Following his presentation, Nancy Nattoli, who's the Director of the Department of Defense REPI Program, that we have, we've worked with her quite closely over the last number of years, she gave a briefing on buffering and encroachment prevention, citing NS Whiting Field and Santa Rosa County as being the model for the nation on how to do it and how to form the right kind of partnership. Approximately $13 million has been spent through the REPI Program here in Santa Rosa County to acquire conservation easements and land involving approximately 3,000 acres to buffer that base since 2004. So they recognize and they hold us up as the model as to how to do it. She was followed by Captain Rios, Pat Rios, he's with Navy Installations Command, and he stressed the need for encroachment management and active community installation engagement, as we have been doing here with Whiting Field for many years. And he felt that that is the best prevention and preparation for a BRAC and saving a mission in the future. He was followed by Vice Admiral Richard Hunt, who's Director of the Navy Staff, stressing the importance of the Navy and the Marine Corps in global power projection as the Afghanistan war winds down and budget hits the military. He, along with Rear Admiral William Layer, spoke about the growing cyber threat to the nation and the important role that Cory Station will be playing in training all DOD personnel to combat this threat. They mentioned that every day there are hundreds of cyber attacks against our military installations, against the Pentagon, against our banking and financial systems, and it's a growing threat. He did say that he foresees Cory Station having the potential to become the cyber center of excellence for all of the Department of Defense. Kathleen Ferguson, Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Air Force, provided an overview of sequestration's impact on the Air Force. And the biggest impact, in addition to the reductions in civilian personnel and contractors, there's a 30% reduction in flying hours for the Air Force worldwide. And she stressed the imperative for two more rounds of BRAC in 2015 and 2017. The Air Force, the reason is that the Air Force now has 500 fewer aircraft than they had after BRAC 2005. As a result, they've got about 25% excess capacity in installations that they're going to have to do something with in order to meet their budget numbers. The good news is that Tindal Air Force Base will be receiving 22 more F-22 Raptors in FY 2014, along with 460 people. So there are still missions, even with sequestration, that'll be coming to the Panhandle. As I mentioned, that our meetings on the following day with congressional leaders were abbreviated because of the unscheduled visit by the President on Capitol Hill. There were real no takeaways from those meetings. And most of the Northwest Florida Defense Coalition attendees returned back to Pensacola that afternoon. I can tell you, it was good to get back to Pensacola and Santa Rosa County. That really concludes my overview of what took place in Washington. Like I say, you have the trip report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those now.
I just want to remind everyone the importance of everything that Pete said, but especially when we go to Washington, D.C., whether it's on the hill or the Pentagon, how often, especially the Navy, refers to the Santa Rosa Whiting Field model on encroachment prevention in the map that is part of our package. It's not uncommon to see this map in several different locations in Washington, D.C. So it's just nice to know that we've built those kind of relationships, especially with the strong potential of reducing missions in the BRAC 2015 and 2017. So everything we're doing, we need to keep doing and keep doing it better. So Pete, we appreciate the job you do.
And I just want to add that Ms. Nattoli specifically referred to the map, to the entire group. And a number of attendees came up to me and Commissioner Salter after that meeting asking for copies of it. So.
Okay.
Pete, if I might, when Secretary Principi, you're right on target with that, because when he was still Veteran Secretary, he worked diligently with Congressman Miller. So he's, you know, with the Naval Hospital and different veterans, things that Congressman's been able to bring to the Panhandle. So he's very familiar with us.
He is probably the foremost expert on BRAC matters since he chaired the last commission.
That's, you're right. He's a good person for us to have in that place.
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Pete, thanks again. All right. We'll move on now to the Administrative Committee. Item number one is Discussion of Cornell Drive/Georgetown Court Paving Water and Sewer MSBU Project. And I'll move that without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I met with a couple of the proponents of the, excuse me, the MSBU yesterday. You know, this is on our agenda because the bids that came in for construction were significantly higher than the original estimate in the MSBU to the tune of, you know, 35 and 40%. The backers of the MSBU are still trying to come up with some way to move forward on this. We're not ready to take any action today. And we have another 30 days, I guess, on the bid before we have to take any action. It was opened February 26. It was a 60-day hold. So if we could just postpone any action on this, we'll take it up at a meeting in the future.
All right. Noting Commissioner Lynch's comments, we'll table this item. Yeah? Okay. All right. Till a further date. Item number two is Recommend Policy Revision, Allowing Pensacola Beach Residents Access to Library Card and Related Services at No Cost. Comments? Questions on that? We discussed it the other day, and we're certainly going to look into how that could be reciprocated for our citizens. And hearing no comments, we'll move that without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item three is Recommend Use of Navar Nature Walk Park by Greater Navar Beach Arts Association. Item three is Recommend Use of Navarre Nature Walk Park by Greater Navarre Beach Arts Association Incorporated for Annual Fall Festival, September 27th through 29th, 2013. Move that without objection. It passes. Item four, Recommend Letter of Opposition to the Governor and Legislative Delegation Regarding House Bill PCB, SCCB 13-01, Which Significantly Increases Sovereign Immunity Exposure for County Governments. We discussed this also the other day. Any further comments on it this time? Commissioner.
Yes, sir. I just hope we can have this letter ready for when we go to Tallahassee next week.
Yes, sir. I don't see any reason why not. Staff will get that ready. I'm getting that.
We'll do that. Also, just to remind the Board what the cost is, I emailed that out. I believe it's about $172,000 currently. So if it were to go a five-fold increase, would probably be, you know, another million dollars. And that would, I mean, that would trigger, I mean, we would have to do some significant obvious reductions to meet that.
And I spoke to Chris Hawley the other day about this and also the federal government trying to move forward with removing tax-free municipal bonds, and both of those will be on next week's agenda. All right, I'll look forward to signing that, and we'll take that to Tallahassee next week. So we'll move that without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number five is An Add-on Recommend Amendment to Artificial Reef Permit with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for Expansion of Gulfside Marine Sanctuary to Accommodate 30 Additional Reef Structures as Requested by the Marine Sanctuary Committee. These are good things, and they help fishies out there. So I'm going to move that without objection. We'll ask staff, though, Hunter, can we get a total on how many reefs we got out there now?
Sure, we'll do that.
I think we've done this project several times.
This, well, we'll get you a total, whatever.
All right. Be great. All right, thank you. Item number six is Meetings. Unless otherwise noted, the meetings below will be held at the Boardroom of the Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. All the meetings are listed with times for you and also locations if they're not at this facility. They're also available online. So I'll move those meeting dates without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Engineer Report. Item number one is Recommend Construction Plans for Pace Mill Creek Phase Two, A 27-Lot Subdivision Located in Working District One. I'll move that without objection, and it passes. This time, we'll move back to the public hearing. Public hearing is an ordinance amendment, amending ordinance 2007-16, Section 5, Permitting Procedures for Construction and Demolition or Land Clearing Debris/Solid Waste Disposal Facilities, Providing for Additional, excuse me, Providing for the Addition of Disclosure of Financial Responsibility for Closure Procedures. Open this now to comments from Board members or staff. Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one amendment I would ask my fellow commissioners to entertain. Under Item 5, Financial Responsibility, Paragraph A, dealing with, let's see, Based on Standards Adopted by the County Engineer in His Sole Discretion. I think we all received an email from someone about that. And in reviewing this, I spoke with the county attorney on Monday, to try to come up with a reasonable methodology for determining what the financial assurance should be. In other words, how do we set that level? What amount is appropriate? So I would propose that we say, based on standards adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, instead of the county engineer in his sole discretion. Nothing against Roger, but he's probably happy to see that come over here.
That's an order change.
And then, then with, other than that, I'm comfortable with the language in the resolution or the proposed ordinance. However, we will need to come back and adopt those particular standards. That won't be an ordinance. That will just be a policy that the Board sets. In doing so, we've received information from Escambia County. Again, I asked Ms. Jones to look into how much Escambia County had to pay to remediate some of their problem areas, one being Softly Field. Softly Field was a 20-acre C&amp;D facility. Remediation and closure, they went out for bid. Their low bid was $7 million. High bid was $12 million for a 20-acre site. Even dealing with LCD pits, land clearing debris, you know, often it's thought that closure or remediation, dealing with those pits, is a minor amount because of the type of material that goes in. But the Cove LCD was a 20-acre facility. They've spent $250,000 for cover and fighting fires at that LCD pit. So it's obvious that the amounts involved are significant, certainly for a C&amp;D pit. If you have a problem that you have to come back and fix, the costs are going to be just astronomical. Even for a small site, a 20-acre site, you know, $7 million, that's an incredibly high figure, certainly not something that we could just take on without some financial assurance or help from the owner of the site. I think we need to move forward with approving the ordinance, but then work towards adopting a standard for setting the amount for financial assurance. I would propose that we procure more real-world examples of how much it has cost to other local governments and DEP to remediate and close C&amp;D pits. And then we can take an average of, you know, five or 10 of those projects and base it on a pro rata amount. In other words, if you're developing 10 acres, you're going to pay this much per acre, or you're going to have this much per acre in financial assurance available before we will issue the permit. Again, it's not going to be an exact science, but there's, you know, each site is different. The environmental contamination is different. But if we can come up with some average per acre for remediation and closure, and then apply that as our standard moving forward, so that if you have a five-acre site, this is your financial assurance. If you have a 30-acre site, you know, you're going to pay a pro rata amount based on the acreage. That would be what I would suggest.
I do have a question for county attorney, just for my own clarity. We keep talking about closure and financial responsibility for closure. Are we also addressing maintenance or interim problems of fire breaks out and we spend a lot of money? I thought I heard that, but I want to clarify.
I believe you did, Commissioner. The original version of the ordinance covered closure and post-closure care. This amendment includes corrective action, which is what you're talking about. And I believe what Commissioner Lynch is suggesting is us using some real-world examples to formulate a monetary amount that could be associated with that corrective action during the life of the pit.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Okay. Commissioner Melvin.
And these financial assurances and closure, closure doesn't terminate the operator's liability to the property unless you have an irresponsible situation where, like Softly and Coyote, those folks that kind of skated out of Dodge and left Santa Rosa County holding the bag and Escambia County holding the bag. Is there any way legally that we can put requirements in the permitting process that would at least mitigate that ability to skate out of their responsibilities?
I think that's what we're trying to do here. The intent of this ordinance is to make sure that we have some funding source for either remediation, corrective action, or closure and post-closure care once the owner of the property goes belly up, because that's invariably what happens when these things go south, because the amounts involved are such that the owners declare bankruptcy and move away.
But the owners are not real individuals or corporate entities, and if we could come up with a way to get back to the real human being behind that corporate entity, because it's a shell game. And as they close and leave the liability, they're not bankrupt as individuals. The corporation is bankrupt. If we could somehow or other tie it back to the human being and his assets or her assets, that was my question as a layman.
Get personal guarantees from the principals of the limited liability entity, be that a corporation.
In such a way that we could not, you know, you would, you know, the corporate soul would have the ability to bankrupt itself, but the individual wouldn't be able to shed his liability, his or her liability.
I haven't thought about that before. The federal government does that in environmental contamination circle cases. They can reach through the limited liability entity and hold the principals liable. I don't know if the county could, you know, a personal guarantee is one thing, and we could, I would think, require personal guarantees for performance on behalf of the principals of the corporation.
I'd certainly like to see us pursue that.
I don't know of a reason why we couldn't, but I would like to check that out to know for certain. I guess the hope would be that the bond posted would be sufficient to cover this so that we'd never have to go back to a corporation or a person or anyone, that basically we have their money would be the hope. But I'll be delighted to check on that.
If you would, please, because just for the sake of argument, what if the bond wasn't enough? Why should the taxpayers of Santa Rosa County have to step into the gap? We should be able to tap back to the human being that owned that corporation.
I'll be glad to look at that. I may also suggest one other addition to the ordinance that I didn't include when I wrote the draft. I've been working with DEP for some time on an inter-local agreement for financial assurance, which we're statutorily required to pursue. So while our ordinance includes the language that the bonds will be for the benefit of the county solely, I think we should add a clause to that that says, except as may be described or permitted in an inter-local agreement with FDIP on that subject.
And the other thing I would think, as we're developing that matrix with the real-world figures, we set these bonds high enough that, you know, because, you know, even though if we attach somebody, they could be bankrupt or something. I mean, it falls back on that. I'd rather, I'd rather know that we're covered, you know, not go through all that. But I'm glad we're working on that because it's very important. We don't want any more stuff like we're currently dealing with, so. Any other comments, questions? Okay, this time I'd like to open it up to the public for public comment.
At a Luller 2532, Cedar Crest Lane, Navarre, Florida. And Angie, thank you for responding to my email. I think you call it inter-local. I'll make a suggestion that you refer to it as inter-agency to coincide with the DEP. So that inter-local, that's how they define it, is inter-agency. And I know the DEP, I've gone down there, I've met with them, and if it's not in their definition, their engineers, sorry, Roger.
Whatever they want to call it, it'll be fine with us. We're more concerned with the substance than the title, of course.
Right. I know that they're interchangeable, but at the DEP, like remediation and corrective action are not interchangeable. They've thumbed through, it's not defined. Thank you.
Anybody else from the general public? Any other comments at this time? Then I will close today's public hearing. We'll move on. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner.
I would move approval of the ordinance as amended by myself and also incorporating the language suggested by our county attorney, without objection.
Hearing no objection.
One question. Does that incorporate my suggestion about tapping back to the human?
I think that'll be a separate item to take up. I don't know, because we need to find out if we can, if we're legally permitted to require a personal guarantee. Certainly something that we could add to the ordinance, I would think, in the future. We need to.
Well, listen and add the personal guarantee if allowed, so that way she doesn't have to come back to us.
I think we are necessarily going to have to come back with the standards that Commissioner Lynch has suggested, and it may be that that personal guarantee can be part of those standards.
That's fine.
All right, that's kind of the reason I didn't look for a motion, but the proper procedure is motionless. Okay, all right. And hearing no objection, it passes, noting the comments and concern of Commissioner Melvin. All right, we'll move now to our next item on today's agenda, which is Public Services Committee. Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items today. Item number one is Recommend Soliciting Bids for Abatement and Demolition of the Following Unsafe or Derelict Properties. 6496 Gainell Avenue, 5186 Green Springs Drive, 8956 Highway 87 South, 8986 Highway 87 South, 9014 Highway 87 South, 5437 Pecos Pass, 5441 Pecos Pass, 8730 Ray Helms Road, 4466 Tamarind Drive, and 8302 Verano Street. And I'll move those without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is Recommend Resolution Authorizing 2013/2015 Local Housing Assistance Plan as Required by the State Housing Initiatives Program Ship Act, Including Execution of Relevant Documents. I'll move that without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item three is Recommend Operating Agreement with U.S. Department of the Navy, NAS Whiting Field, Establishing Protocols for Managing Emergency Calls, 911 Calls for NAS Whiting Field. I'll move that without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And that concludes Public Services. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Commissioner Lynch. Now we'll move to Public Works Committee. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six items today. The first item is Recommend Requests from the Parker Landing Homeowners Association for a No Parking Zone on West Spring Pines Boulevard for approximately 75 feet north and south of Lee Wood Way. And I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is Recommend Installation of Four Multiway Stop Intersections on Mary Kate Drive and Kelpin Boulevard as Traffic Calming Measures as Requested by the Grand Point Homeowners Association. And I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is Recommend Milling and Resurfacing of Henry and Forsyth Streets at an estimated cost of $290,000 from franchise fees for road and drainage. And I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is Recommend Proposal from Lowry Industrial Coatings Incorporated in the Amount of $26,800 for Painting the Exterior Administration Building Based on Comparison Shopping. And I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five is Recommend Purchase of Steel Pilings for Bridge Construction from Sable Steel Service at a Cost of $41,700 Based on Comparison Shopping. And I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item six is Recommend Easement from Grover Robertson IV as Trustee of the Alice Amelia Hall Trust for the Purpose of Eliminating Limited Visibility at the Intersection of 12 Oaks Drive and Westminster Field Road. And I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. At this time, we'll go to Budget and Finance. Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have 10 items this morning. Item number one is To Recommend Bids from Sessions Incorporated for the Demolition/Abatement of the Following Nuisance/Derelict Properties as Low Bid or Meeting specifications. 2220 Jenny Street for $2,250, 2204 Jenny Street for $2,250, 5237 Lassiter Road for $3,250, and 4566 Rambling Way for $2,850. And I move approval with objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is Recommend Budget Amendment 2013-105 in the Amount of $304,440, which Will Carry Forward Funds for Replacement of the Telephone System for the Sheriff's Office and the General Fund. I recommend approval with objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is Recommend Budget Amendment 2013-106 in the Amount of $40,000, which Will Carry Forward Funds for Property and General Liability Coverage in the General Fund. And I recommend approval with objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is Recommend Budget Amendment 2013-107 in the Amount of $5,600, which Will Recognize the Donations and All. will recognize the donations and authorize those for expenditures for improvements to Baghdad Millsite Park and the District Two Projects Fund, and I recommend approval of objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is to recommend budget amendment 2013-108 in the amount of $1,230,000 for the construction of a covered arena in East Milton Park from District Two Projects Fund as approved at the January 22nd, 2013 Board Meeting. I recommend approval of objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six is recommend budget amendment 2013-109 in the amount of $34,877, which will carry forward funds for the canal street improvements in the road and bridge fund as approved at the January 12th, 2000 Board Meeting, and I recommend approval of objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven is recommend budget amendment 2013-110 in the amount of $68,000, which will carry forward prior year accumulation of the crime prevention reserves for authorized expenditures in the fine and forfeiture fund. I recommend approval of objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number eight is recommend budget amendment 2013-111 in the amount of $25,000 to the Towne O'Jate for the recreation program from the District Three Recreation Fund as approved at the March 14th, 2013 Board Meeting, and I recommend approval of objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number nine is an add-on, which is recommend budget amendment 2013-112 in the amount of $10,000 from the District Four Recreation Fund for design of the Navar Beach Marine Science Center Expansion Project, and I recommend approval of objection.
Before we leave this, Commissioner Melvin, if I might, years ago, after the county took over this park from the state, Commissioner Gooden brought this project to us, and, and, you know, I kind of wondered about the viability of this project, but it's certainly panned out to be one of the outstanding things that we have here in our county. And I visited that with my grandchildren, and they, you know, children love it. It's, it's even, it's really a neat place to visit. So if you haven't taken your children or grandchildren out there and visited the Marine Sanctuary, do so. It's, it's a great addition to our county, and I just hope everybody will take advantage of that, so. And I move that without objection.
Yes, sir. And also, for those of you who don't know, because I didn't know until I got my orientation after I was elected, the, they work with our honor students that are interested in the STEM, the science, technology, math, and those young people are dual-enrolled, receiving dual high school and college credits. So these are really sharp, sharp folks from Santa Rosa County. Item number 10 is recommend county expenditure and check rest, or I've reviewed that document and I signed off on it, put it on your desk this morning, Mr. Chairman. I recommend approval of objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. County Administrator? County Attorney? Anybody else on staff or county clerk, clerk of courts, anyway? All right. Hearing none, I'll open it to public forum if anybody in, like to have comments. Hearing none, we are adjourned.